Order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, law, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And welcome to the May 31st County Commission meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cellphone. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder. And if you need a listening device, Robert is in the front row and he could help you with that. That will move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second, motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the minute meetings from April 24th, excuse me, May 24th, 2016. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I also neglected to say that we need a motion for the joint city-county meeting.
I'll make that motion to approve.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $1,572. Wait, start again. $1,572, eight hundred and six thousand and sixty-five cents.
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
And a motion is second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is the general fund surplus analysis for March 31st, 2016. Item B is the Minnehaw County Highway Report for June 2016, and those are on file at the auditor's office. Item five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Summit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is application for abatement. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is a notice from the Sioux Falls Firefighters Benevolence Fund for the intent to conduct a fundraising raffle to benefit as Sioux Falls Firefighters Benevolent Fund Memorial Plaza on September 17th, 2016. Item eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item nine is petition for compromise of lien. Thank you. I'll let you read all those numbers.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson of the Commission Office. You have before you this morning compromise lien application for DPNOs 78300 in the amount of $7,493.86. DPNO 82021 in the amount of $1,044. And DPNO 58062 in the amount of $167.55. Now, before I get into the narrative here, I just want to explain a little bit that typically, as I go through these applications, we may talk about applicant number one, applicant number two, so as not to use names while we're going through the review process. In this instance, we have two applicants, and then we have another individual with a very similar name, but different individual that's involved. So as I go through here, I'm going to be talking about applicant number one, applicant number two, and other individual. Just thought it might be a little simpler to explain that before we get into the narrative. And I believe one of the applicants is here, may want to speak with you after I'm done. I don't know. I'll leave that up to that individual. Applicants number one and two, a married couple have submitted an application for a compromise and release in full with no payment on DPNOs 78300, 82021, and 58062. The couple is in the process of a divorce, and the liens were noted during a review prior to the sale of the family home located at 132 Northwest Avenue in Sioux Falls. That sale is on hold pending the resolution of this application. DPNO 58062 in the amount of $167.55 is in applicant number one's name. Lien was recorded in November of '05 related to assistance provided by the Human Services Office. Couple was married at the time, and both spouses' names are listed on the application form. Several small, consistent, partial payments have been received on this lien in 2012 and 2013. Second lien, DPNO number 82021 in the amount of $1,044, is in the name of both applicant number one and applicant number two for public defender services provided to a minor child in 2015. The third one, DPNO 78300 in the amount of $7,493.86, is the most complicated of the liens here today. This represents a combination of services provided to the applicants and to an unrelated individual with a very similar name. The applicants, in this case, applicants number one and applicant number two. The individual listed on the lien summary are applicant number one and other individual. The other individual and applicant number two are different individuals. Very similar names, different dates of birth, different social security numbers, and different home addresses. $6,028.86 of this lien represents services provided to other individual. The remaining, $1,465, was recorded for services provided to the applicant's minor child. So you do have that combination there. The applicant's list total assets of approximately $2,100. In medical expenses of, start over on that point, assets just under $2,100, and liabilities of about $15,000. Applicant number one works full-time, reports that his spouse has had significant medical issues, and just started a job after working, not working for many years. Couple lists an annual income of just over $37,000, and received a 2015 tax return of about $21,000. Now, there was the clerical error made on DPNO 78300 that I spoke of. Based on that, the Commission Office recommends the following actions. And I don't know if you want to take action on these, one by one, or if you would like me to summarize all three, and then provide opportunity for any comment the applicant may make. But I have three points that I will make moving forward.
Maybe we should see if the applicant wants to speak first? Is that all right? Or would you like to hear Robert's recommendations first?
Chair, could I just ask Robert a question?
Commissioner.
Again, on the third DPNO, the one amount was $1,465. That would...
Yes.
So what is the first amount, then?
The first amount is the amount that was incurred by other individual.
Error.
In error is $6,028.86.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to make a motion on any of these first, or do you want to listen to the applicant first? Commissioner Bender?
I think we could go ahead and make a motion to clean up the errors first, and then listen to the applicant. So I would make a motion to remove... Can I just make a motion and read them the way it's written here? To make a motion to remove Donald's name, the address of 132 Northwest Avenue, Sioux Falls, and $1,465 from DPNO 78300, leaving the remaining balance of $6,028.86 solely in the name of Shannon Marie Collins. I don't know if we should take these one at a time, or...
Yeah. That's the one that's the cleanup, I think.
Yep.
Is that, Commissioner Barth, you look into?
I thought that was the reverse of what we wanted to do, but is that correct, Robert?
That is correct.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. The motion is second for DPNO number 78300, and leave the... I'm not going to read it again. Commissioner Bender read it correctly. Are there any questions about that motion? This is a cleanup motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Now, what remains is the current applicant, one and two.
Well, then number two would apply the $1,465 to the lien already established in both applicants' names.
Okay. Commissioner Bender?
So then I'd make a motion to apply $1,465 to DPNO 82021. So the resulting lien balance will be $2,509.
Okay.
I'll second that.
A motion is second on that cleanup. Is there any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. So the next one would be DPNO number 82021 and 58062. And that's what remains. And is that amount that's remaining, Robert? Do you have the total remaining? And then we could give the applicant an opportunity to speak?
Yes. Well, for DPNO 82021, that total is now $2,509. And 85062, that item remain, that total remains constant at $1,6755.
I think we ought to wait on this until we hear from them.
Yeah. Yeah, we are. I just want to know the numbers. What was the, the second one was the $1,465? The 58062 was $1,465, is that correct?
That is $1,6755.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner?
Okay, now we've cleaned up one of the errors.
Yep.
Now, what we're talking about is applicant one and two, the remaining two liens against them. Is that correct?
You've actually taken two, you've made two, taken two actions at this point.
Yep.
You took two actions to clean up the clerical error that you, and you dealt with those in one and two.
Okay.
Now you're at the point of your, essentially, what is your discretionary ability of, do you want to do anything with the liens now that we, you've cleaned them up?
Okay, so against one and two?
Yes.
What have we?
We haven't done anything yet.
So what's left? Is that the $2,509 and the $1,6755?
What you have now is two liens that are in the name of the applicants. One is DPNO 82021 for $2,509, and then you have 85062 in the amount of $1,6755.
58062?
58062.
Yes.
Okay. Now, would the applicant like to speak? You do not have to come to the microphone. You do not have to give your name. You can stand where you are. You can sit where you are. You just have to talk loud. Okay. Applicant doesn't want to say anything, so what are your, any questions for Robert, or emotion, discussion?
Robert, did you get financial info from both named on the DPNOs, on the liens, or just from the one?
Well, the tax return was filed jointly. We have that. That's included. The information was that one of the spouses has just started a new job, and we do not have information on the co-applicant.
I guess I'm a little confused as to why, the $1,67, whatever it is, 55, there have been payments against it. Apparently, it's just to clear up selling the house, which there will be proceeds from the house. I know it isn't a big amount, but I'm not sure why we're compromising that.
The application is brought forward for your consideration as it was...
I understand, no, I understand. It's not a recommendation. And the public defender cost for the minor child was their one and two's child?
Yes.
Well, I certainly think that there's room for discussion on all of this, and I'm going to make a motion for the $1,6755 to be forgiven.
Is there a second to forgiving DPNO number 58062 for $1,6755?
Can I ask for a point of clarification? So is that motion, then, that the remaining, the $2,509 would remain?
I was just going to discuss that separately.
Okay. Well, then I will second the motion for purposes of discussion.
The motion is second to dismiss the DPNO 58062? Discussion? Commissioner Barth?
I just think that there have been some payments, and it's certainly not the most substantial part of this application.
I would support this motion if that's all that we're going to be compromising at this point, and the remainder could be paid out of the proceeds from the sale of the house.
Any other comments? The motion is second on DPNO number 58062 in the amount of $1,6755 to compromise. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, and passes four to one. Now to deal with DPNO number 82062 in the amount of $2,509.
So matter... Two one.
Sorry. I said it wrong, two. Robert, do you want to say that again?
The one lien remaining in the name of both applicants is 82021 for $2,509.
So, if I might ask Commissioner Bender, so you think that we should hold on to our full amount then on this lien?
Well, I think some payment is, I think some payment should be made on this. I don't, that's why I was asking for clarification. I would be willing to, I mean, I think we have a history of compromising these up to 50%, and I'd be willing to take the total amount owed and compromise up to 50% possibly. But I think some payment should be paid, should be made.
Dick had his hand up.
Commissioner Kelly?
The 5281 that says poor relief, is that probably medical?
5281?
Mm-hmm.
What number are you referencing there?
Yeah, what lien number is it here? It's the one that has the big balance. Oh, wait a minute. Now, this goes to the other person. We already took care of that one. Okay.
The amount we're talking about is $2,509. Correct?
Correct.
If I may, Manager.
Commissioner Barth?
Do we have a date on the closing when this needs to be resolved?
My understanding from the applicant is that there was a original closing date scheduled that has already passed when this was discovered. That is on hold at this point, and a new closing date has not been scheduled.
Where is the transcript of what's been done on this one that we're talking about? I see the one for the $1,67, the activity.
Yep.
And I see the one that was in error.
Well, the one that is now $2,509 is presented with a total, the total that is now $2,509.
Is that part of that $7,400 or something?
Yes. Part of that was removed from that one and placed onto the one that in your packet appears for the amount of $1,044. It was placed onto 82021. That was, you combined that with your earlier motion.
The error really confused this whole thing.
I would agree that these are confusing under the best of circumstances, and these certainly are not the best of circumstances. You know, I would make a motion to compromise $1,000 of this. Let me make sure I got my numbers right here. And leave a balance of $1,509 to be paid.
I'll second that.
The motion is second for DPNO number 82021 in the amount to compromise $1,000 and leave the remaining total at $1,509. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And you can work with Robert if you have any additional questions on that.
Quick question, Robert. How did this happen? I mean, how does a $5,000 lien get put on somebody who isn't even their lien?
I can tell you that myself and Kirsten Katmeyer and Sarah Show spent considerable amount of time looking at this, going back. And it really appears that what you have is you have two individuals, very similar names. On top of that, the social security numbers are similar. They're different by one or two digits. And it was, it was a clerical error that crossed these as they came into the office. And that, and once that's recorded, it goes back to really what we tell applicants when they come in, is once a lien is recorded, the only way that it goes away or is disposed of, other than payment in full, is by an action of the County Commission. So that, once it was recorded, that set forth this process to unravel it, took the action that you just considered.
Thank you, Robert. With that, we'll go on to opportunity for public comment if you would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda today, and keep it brief.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lind Young, Emergency Management. I'd just like to remind you of a training event this week. The South Dakota State Fire School is being held in Minnehaw County here and the city of Sioux Falls. We are the host. With that, we expect approximately 475 to 500 firefighters from across the state of South Dakota to come to our community for the training, starting on June 2nd. We will have a banquet with Commissioner Heiburger giving opening remarks along with other individuals from the area. And then, to culminate the banquet, we'll have Chad Greenway from the Minnesota Vikings giving a keynote address. That's something that hasn't been done before for this group, so we're excited to have him there. On the third and the fourth, we'll have training classes for our first responders that are coming in. And those training classes include anything from So You Think You're a Fire Chief, the work that goes into that, helicopter landing sites, weather spotting, forensic pathologies of burns and mass fatalities by your own Dr. Kenneth Snell, traffic management, save yourself active shooter, pipeline safety, public information, fire prevention, and a host of other classes for those volunteers to come in from the state. And all of that is being provided by a registration of 60 bucks. So for $60, the firemen will come in Friday, excuse me, Thursday. And with Thursday, they'll get their meal, plus their families able to attend the keynote address by Chad Greenway. They'll get three additional meals and their training. So for $60, it's pretty affordable for firefighters across the state to do that. But we couldn't do that without some wonderful, our wonderful sponsorships from Sanford, from Avera. Minnehaw County has also participated with in-kind and all kinds of other things. DJ is allowing us to use the highway shop, or, excuse me, the gravel pit for a drone class. And then we have Rosenbauer sponsors, a host of sponsors, too numerous to list. But the important part is firefighters from across the state will be in the community, once again, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, getting valuable training and education so that they can bring back to their areas and their communities and hope, help during emergency situations, whether it's fire, rescue, or anything else in their communities. So I just wanted to bring that back to the attention. This has been a group effort in Minnehaw County for the last two years. It's not an easy chore to plan, but it's going to be a great event for, like I said, firefighters from across the state. And we're thankful for the support that we've gotten from the Commission up to this point and the continued support after that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on this event.
Okay. Thank you, Lind. Are there any questions? Commissioner Barth?
Lind, so do we have many West River coming, do you know?
Yeah, there's a majority, or about 30% of the applicants are certainly from this area because it's close. But we certainly do have from Rapid City and Prescho and Lemon and Custer and all of those other people that are attending, so.
Great.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions for Lind?
Once again, thank you for your continued support of the volunteers, not only in Minnehaw County, but through this event all across the state of South Dakota.
Okay. Thank you. And we will continue public comment. Good morning. This is what's to be continued.
Morning. Bob Colby, Minnehaw County. I hope you all had a good, what I grew up knowing as a decoration day. And that if you didn't get to a memorial service, you at least got to a cemetery and did your thing there. Or if not, you at least had good thoughts about those who've gone before us, whether they were family members or the military. Commissioner Barth last week said something about people have been doing things since I have been on the Commission. I'm not saying that you haven't done anything. I'm just saying that everybody stands on somebody's shoulders, and all those who've gone before have done something. And I tried to give a little perspective on some of the history that has transpired because I've had the opportunity to watch the Commission since about 1982. As Commissioner Barth said, no one person runs the Commission or operates the Commission. It's a joint effort. It functions as a body. But in all political endeavors, it's predicated on two things, cooperation and trust. And if you don't get the cooperation from other political bodies, you might not be trustworthy. They may not be trustworthy in your eyes. The trust comes from both the other entities, like the city, other counties, et cetera, legislature, or individuals who happen to sit on the Commission. Generally, we give trust pretty easily, because when a person comes on, you start at a zero point. It's not that you have a great amount of trust or that you've lost trust in the person. And in this election season, trust seems to be one of the major things that's going to happen in the presidential election. 911, I sat on that side of the bench when that happened. And the biggest thing that happened was that trust was taken away from a lot of what we do. We no longer trust a lot of people as a corporate feeling. Each of us has people who we have lost trust in. I've lost trust in a mayor who acted as an individual when a body was working toward the betterment of the people, and that person went on to other political endeavors. Even, Commissioner Barth is back to about zero in my estimation, because I remember when he first came on the Commission, we had an executive session, and he did something that hurt the trust in my mind.
Bob, if we're going to make this thing into a, tearing down people, I don't think it's a purpose of public input. We certainly don't need a history lesson every week.
This is public speaking, and if you don't like it, you may depart. Even Commissioner Kelly, now that he reminds me, he said that he wanted me to retire from the County Commission so he could be appointed and run as an incumbent.
When did I say?
Denied such when confronted with the Argus Leader. But that's his to bear, his cross to bear. Trust is a big thing, and one has to have trust in the people you do business with, whether it be with the city or other county. But on a lighter note, on the 1st of June, I will have been doing my business for 44 years and start my 45th year, which is an accomplishment that many people can't say, mostly because they don't live long enough. And in today's market, you change jobs with some regularity, and you do other things that are worth noting. And it's nice to be able to look back and have an appreciation for history, because if you don't know where you've been, you will not know where you're going. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will move, if there is no more public comment, we will move on to regular... business. Item number 10 is consider an award bid for the administration building re-roofing project opened, bids opened on May 25, 2016. Good morning, Mark.
Good morning, Commissioner. Mark Krins, Facilities Department. The administration building roof was budgeted for replacement in 2016, and we've been working with Architecture Incorporated who coordinated a bid opening on the date of May 25, 2016 at 10:30 a.m. We had four contractors that submitted base bids who were Architectural Roofing and Sheep Metal, Dawson and Corp. Incorporated, Great Plains Roofing, and Guaranteed Roofing and Sheep Metal. Architectural Roofing and Sheep Metal came in with a low bid of $103,890, which includes replacing the existing coping, with a deduct of $15,350 as an alternate. We recommend accepting the low bid of $103,890 with the deduct of $15,350 for a total base bid of $88,540 with architectural roofing and sheet metal.
Any questions for Mark? This was an item that was discussed in building meeting this morning at 8 o'clock.
I'll move to accept the bid.
Second.
Is that move to accept the bid with the acceptance of the alternate?
With the alternate one.
I have a motion and a second to accept with an alternate. Commissioner Benega.
Mark, there was some conversation a few months ago about some concern about the strength of the roof, and I know we had an engineering study and that obviously proved that the facility was structurally sound.
Yes, they had no concerns.
Thank you.
The motion is second. If there's no other comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number 11 is consider a motion to amend the commission action on April 26, 2016 approving the weed purchase, chemical purchase in the amount of $12,670.20, DJ. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Booth, Highway Superintendent. You had previously authorized the approval of the weed chemical purchase through the state of South Dakota bid, and we are just coming today for a revision to that approval. There was a small math there that resulted in, I think, $100 or $200 worth of difference on the purchase amount, and so just need to make sure that we get the correct number in the minutes before we make that purchase.
Any questions?
Make the motion, I have a question, I guess.
I have a motion, a second. Second, Commissioner Barth.
DJ, didn't we authorize your department to make some changes, like $30 needs to come to us? Is this...
That's the same change, and I think that we just needed to make sure it was correct in the minutes.
Okay, thanks.
Will we accept the change?
We have a motion and a second already, Commissioner Kelly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is authorize the chairman to sign professional services agreements with Infrastructure Design Group Incorporated in the amount of $41,851 for a multi-intersection traffic study.
Commissioners, on the third page of your briefing memo, there's a map. Robert, are we able to pull that map up?
Yes.
All right. On the third page of your memo, there's a map that shows 10 intersections, and the highway department, as you're aware, has been starting some reconstruction projects where we are regrading and resurfacing our roadways as we kind of enter into that, that kind of a program. Before we do major reconstructions, we want to make sure that we're reconstructing the right size of roadway. And when I say size, I mean a number of lanes specifically at intersections. And we also have identified certain intersections that have some safety concerns or potentially have some safety concerns, and so what we're wishing to do with this agreement is ask a traffic engineer to look at 10 different intersections that are shown on this map here and analyze them for the volume of traffic passing through the intersection or turning at the intersection, and also the number of accidents or the accident history at these particular intersections, and then make recommendations for any kind of improvements that we can make to provide a better level of service to our public. And that could be additional lanes, it could be different signage, it could be different signals possibly, it could be any number of things that we're going to look at basically with an open mind at these intersections to see if we can make any improvements, not necessarily next year, but over the, this is sort of a long-term planning process where we look at, as we're doing reconstructions or improvements around the county, we are going to be focusing on these intersections throughout the next maybe 10 years or so and implementing some of the improvements that they are recommending. So the agreement dollar amount, I think, is $41,851. It's with Infrastructure Design Group, who we've done a lot of work with here in the past. Phil Gunvalson from Infrastructure Design Group is here if you guys have any questions. Shannon is also here. He's more of the technical expert on our traffic analysis, and so I can answer any questions that you might ask, or I can call one of these guys up to the podium as well.
Any questions on this?
DJ, and I apologize if you said this because I was kind of reading this while you were speaking, but it's my understanding that these, the 10 intersections, the 10 places that are picked are based on the 2040 NPOs, Long Range Planning Study, is that correct?
That was kind of the first document that we looked at in identifying these intersections, where we show certain developments that are potentially going to happen in the next 25 years through that long-range planning process. And then some of the intersections also are just intersections that we know are going to be key throughout the development in the next 25 years, or they've shown some concerns for safety in the past, and we're just aware of them because of those safety concerns. And so kind of a combination of those three items.
Additional questions? DJ, I'm wondering, how long do they expect this traffic study to take?
You know, that's a good question. Phil, what's the completion date on the agreement?
I believe it'll go through the end of March next year.
Do you want to just, you know, Phil, could you just come up and just speak on the microphone? Identify yourself and just give the information publicly.
Phil Gunvalson with Infrastructure Design Group. The completion date for the study is the end of March. We're really not going to be starting with the traffic counts until October with these intersections being on the urban fringe, some out in the rural areas. We'll wait till harvest time and when school's back in session to kind of get the worst-case scenario for traffic. But we'll start some other data collection, you know, prior to that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I have a question for DJ when we're done, but I'll make a motion to approve.
The motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Barth has a question.
DJ, so today we started construction on the Redwood Avenue Bridge, is that right?
The plan is to start later today, yes.
Okay. I drove across it the other day and I noticed it's pretty darn narrow. There were kids with fishing poles walking over it, looked pretty dangerous. Good luck with that project.
Thank you. Our pre-construction meeting, I think, started about 30 minutes ago, so they are planning on starting the removals, like I said, probably around lunchtime or after the pre-construction meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is author, oh, I didn't have a vote, sorry. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 13 is authorize the chairman to sign the lease agreement between Minnehaha County Girl Scouts Dakota Horizons for use at the portion of Wall Lake Park.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Administrative Officer. In the 1950s, there was land at Wall Lake that was deeded to Minnehaha County by the Lyons family, and the evolution of that has included the Girl Scout camp, which many of you are familiar with. The contract was last renewed in 1999 and needed to be renewed at this particular time. This lease is a little bit differently than what we've done in the past before because the Girl Scouts have reached out to the YMCA and have come up with some great plans, and I, Scott Anderson and Commissioner Barth, who's liaison to the planning and zoning in parks, are very excited about because it allows for more use of a wonderful asset that Minnehaha County has, that they will be cooperatively doing, using that camp during the summers on that. Before you, you have the contract for, that is offered for your signature. In this contract, it, the Girl Scouts, the leases would be responsible for paying all the utilities that are out there, would mention that if there was any expanded use of the camp, the YMCA will, or an expanded use of the camp, the YMCA will sublease to give more youth a camping experience, and the lease amount is $4,000 a year annually. We do have representatives from both the Girl Scouts. Marla Myers, who is the director of Girl Scouts, is here, along with representation from the YMCA, if you have any questions.
Any questions for the representatives? This is going to be a wonderful partnership. I thank you so much for the work that you guys have done. We have a beautiful park out by Wall Lake, and it is going to be utilized even more fully now, and I think this is a great, a great contract and a great change for Minnehaha County and the use of that park, so very excited. Did you want to say anything about it? Go ahead, Mike. You have to come up and identify yourself, Mike, thank you. Again, I'd like to thank you so much for putting this together and working through this.
Mike Murphy, Summer Camp Director with Sioux Falls YMCA. I just want to thank everyone on the county commission and the Girl Scout Council for this opportunity. This is a tremendous opportunity for us to offer our campers even a better experience this summer, so it's really an opportunity to expose them to some new areas and some new opportunities and really just a wonderful experience for us, so looking forward to it. And again, thank you for everyone's cooperation and this experience.
That's been great.
Hi, Commissioners. Marla Meyer, I'm the CEO for Girl Scouts Dakota Horizons, and just appreciate your open mind as we look to explore this and getting more and more use out of the beautiful spot that is out there, and I think this partnership has, you know, a great future as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd make, go ahead.
Commissioner Benega.
Mike, if you wouldn't mind sharing with Reconstruction of 26th Street, is there going to be some changes to your Leaf Erickson site?
That is a great question, and all the agencies involved in that project have done a tremendous job of coordinating with us and working with us. We will see a little bit different driveway, if you will, with that project leading into the camp. However, they've been, again, fantastic at coordinating with us. They've promised that will maintain access throughout their project. They've truly gone above and beyond to make sure we can continue our operations throughout that summer and then moving forward, and actually, we're hoping for a better, safer entrance and exit out of the camp once that project is completed, so.
Thank you for your vision on the Wall Lake access and the park, is that, is a wonderful facility.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Commissioner Barth, did you have a comment?
I was going to just make a motion to authorize the chair to sign this contract or this agreement.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 14 is the Minnehaha County Liaison Assignments Reports. Are there any reports? Commissioner Barth.
Well, last week I did make the comment commending Bill Hoskins, our museum director, for his efforts there identifying and label, putting headstones on the graves of two American veterans in the one cemetery in town. And I attended part of that program and it was fabulous. They had reenactors, they had a reenactor chaplain, say, something. They had ladies in period attire placing wreath, and, you know, they fired their muskets in salute. There was, there was maybe 150 people there, I think. So again, I really felt it was commendable that, in fact, interestingly with the reenactors, Bill Hoskins, our director, was just a grunt on the crew, and one of his staffers was the commander. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Any additional liaison reports? Is there any new business? Any old business? Then I'd look for a motion for, to adjourn into executive session for contract negotiation and personnel.
So move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.